Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's say a moment of silence. Good evening and welcome to the City of Waverly Planning and Zoning Meeting for today, Monday, January sixth at twenty 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 five at six P M. We are recommending board only to the Mayor Board of Alderman and will and they will make the final decisions at their meeting. We have a roll call. I'm Chairman Roger Stopenall. We have Commissioners Dr. Barbara Courtney. Ward two, Mr. Dave Confort. Ward three, Mr. Glenn Romero. Ward four, Ms. Tish Ortiz. We have building official, Mr. Chris Carter, building and zoning clerk, Jalen Wilson, and building zoning clerk, Megan Stone. Everyone, please keep on the subject of the various requests and any audited replies. If they won't speak, they got two minutes, two minute rule. Any Commissioners have any comments on Ward one?
No.
Two?
No.
Three?
No.
Four?
No.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the planning and zoning special meeting held on December ninth, twenty twenty four. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Got a motion by Tish, second by Ms. Romero. Any discussion? No?
Fine, worked out.
One? We're getting a vote. One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Okay. We have a public hearing for four twenty four Edward Street, parcel number one six one C dash O dash O two dash one oh nine dot zero 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 owned by Sharon Arnold. Sharon Arnold has filed a request for variance for an accessory structure swimming pool in the side yard. Is Ms. Sharon Arnold here?
Yes.
Okay, let's have a seat. Okay, Mr. Chris.
All right, this one's this one's pretty simple. Just as Roger said, a variance to the requirement to keep the accessory structures in the rear yard. She wants to put it in the side yard of her house. Due to, I think that she's got a fenced in area in the back that is some trees and things. She uses them, uses it for her pets. She wanted to put the pool over in the side yard. What about that?
It happens to the best of us.
You know what? That's Police Chief. Let me catch that.
One moment, please. If y'all want to go ahead. Okay, yeah, Sharon requests a variance to the requirement for accessory structures to be located only in the rear yard. She is requesting approval to replace an above ground swimming pool in her side yard. Properties are one, adjacent properties are one, the property is located in flat subdivision, Alba subdivision, and the staff opinion this commission should review N O six point one, which provides a criteria for granting a variance. Other than that, I've heard Mr. Chris. Any of y'all want to come forth and state whoever wants one of y'all, both of y'all?
Just grab the microphone, please.
Just grab the microphone and state your name, your address, and what you ask for.
Okay, my name's Sharon Arnold. I'm at four twenty four Edward Street. This is my brother Greg Russian for moral support. I have fifty two foot of unused land on the side of my left side of my house.
Yes.
I'm on a corner lot. The backyard is fenced in and it's got a huge cypress tree. I use that little area back there for my three dogs. All that fifty two foot, and you know, they built houses on less than that. I would like to put a nice above ground pool, saltwater pool in that area. I'm seventy four. I'll be retiring in a year or two, and I'd like to have something to do with myself.
Okay.
And there would be, it sides are fenced fenced in, but the adjoining property on the other side of me, the only one at four fourteen Edward Street, I would have to put, I would put a privacy, privacy fence there.
Okay. Is there anyone else in this audience on this variance here on four twenty four Edward Street? Let the record reflect on what the audience. I know you got a question. Chris, you want to say something? Okay. Okay, Commissioner Ward one, any questions?
Did we get any information from anybody in the neighbors about it?
Did we get any mail? Is there any complaints?
No, nothing.
Okay, I'm good.
Ward two?
My question is, I got a picture of your yard here.
Okay.
You know, you have that shed back there. How close to this wrought iron fence in the front is it going to be? Because that's the front of your house. It'd be on the side of your house, but it's also the front of your house.
I have an overhead, like an overhead porch. It's going to be, it's going to be pretty close to that. It's going to be away from the wrought iron and
How many?
About thirty feet.
Okay.
Away from the wrought iron.
So it's still going to be in the side yard. It's not going to move up to the front yard?
No. It's going to be in the back of the left side of the house.
So close to that shed?
Yes.
Just kind of the same question. I'm going to look at it. It looks like you certainly got enough room to do stuff like that.
A lot of room.
But my only question is, wait, to me, I guess the, you're basically going to be on the side of your house. So is the pool going to be from the front of your house back? I mean, it's not going to be in the front?
No, it's not going to be in the front of the house. It's going to be to to the the rear, but still to the left side where
Thirty foot from that wrought iron fence back?
Yeah, which I couldn't tell. I mean, I just noticed that, you know, I think that'll be fine. I just, I know some people would probably have something to say, but I don't see anybody here with anything to say about it if the pool protruded into the front yard.
Oh, no.
But I don't see that happening. So that, yeah.
Um, that's all my question.
Okay, Tish?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Chris, for you? You're good? Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as as written variance to allow accessory structure and other than rear yard.
A second.
Second. Okay. Can we get a vote? One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion passed. You guys still got to come before the Mayor Board of Alderman?
Okay.
And hear their final say so.
Okay, thank you.
And you need fine. You don't need moral support.
Okay, we're going to move on to number eight, which is a public hearing for proposed three twenty nine and proposed three twenty five Jeff Davis Avenue, parcel number one six one D dash zero dash O two dash one eight seven point O O O owned by Charles Johnson. Is Mr. Johnson here?
Yes.
Okay. Charles Johnson has filed a request for preliminary and final plat approval for a property located at proposed three twenty nine and proposed three twenty five Jeff Davis Avenue. B, Charles Johnson has filed for a request for a one hundred foot lot with variance for a property located at proposed three twenty nine Jeff Davis Avenue. And C, Charles Johnson has filed a request for a one hundred foot lot with variance for a property located at proposed three twenty five Jeff Davis Avenue. Chris, you'd like to speak?
Uh, yeah, I guess. Look, we'll address the plat, preliminary and final plat initially. He's got, Mr. Charles has got his property over there on Jeff Davis. Roughly twelve hundred feet long, goes to the back. He is currently building a house in the back part of the property for, I believe it's his sister. You correct me if I'm if I'm wrong, but I believe he's building the house for his sister to live in back there. He would like to split the property towards the back to create another lot that he can build another house for another family member back there towards the back of the property. So it's a pretty simple request as far as plats are concerned. The big concern that we had staff wise was fire protection for those structures being so far back. We have since got all that worked out with Mr. Charles. He is, he's agreed to put in fire suppression sprinkler systems in those houses. So that that alleviates our concerns that we had for the fire protection. I talked with the Fire Chief, you know, I actually went back there a couple of weeks ago, talked to Mr. Charles on site. So Fire Chief's looked at it. He's he's signed off on it. I think the main concerns that we had are squared away.
Okay, do we have anybody in the audience that is talking for or against this property proposed at three twenty nine and three twenty five Jeff Davis Avenue? Did we get any letters, anything in? Okay, let it reflect. No one in the audience and no one sent any letters of opposition. Okay, Ward one?
We have someone for it.
Oh, yeah. Well, this is
Charles.
He can come forth.
One thing to, one, another thing to point out that what I was just discussing dealt mainly with the plats. Another request that he's going to have to have that comes along with that is the lot width variances for those two lots that could be creating that weren't having street frontage. So he'll have to ask for a hundred foot lot width variance in conjunction with the plat approval.
So my only question is, when I was looking at it, it just wasn't clear to me. I mean, it looked like it got a big piece of property, but I don't, I don't really see the split that he's proposing, I guess. And that's what I couldn't quite, is that?
Yeah, the plat's pretty smart at the time.
Right. So this, okay, so, all right, this is the split here, right here and right here?
Correct.
And would they both access by that roadway?
Correct.
And then this already belongs to him?
Yeah, all of it. It's all.
Yeah, so that, yeah. Yeah. So basically, these two lots would just have to share that pathway.
That's correct.
Yeah. And probably be the same family.
That's
I mean, I don't know if
You want to come forth?
I don't know if that becomes a problem or not, but
Mr. Johnson?
Legally, no, he could do a good ingress, egress, easement perpetual. It wouldn't matter if it's family or not, but I don't know what his plans are long term.
Say your name and your address for record in your request.
Charles Johnson. Previously, I guess, three thirty five Jeff Davis Avenue, and I'd like to turn it into three twenty five and three twenty nine.
So the driveway, it shows it comes down the side of the property. It doesn't show it going to the eastern lot. How they going to get from that driveway over to there? The driveway goes all the way down?
Well, that's a
That's all Lots over here.
One at a time.
The division's right there.
Yeah, yeah, division lot. This will be a lot. So this is going to go through this lot to that lot?
It's already a designated right of way. This is all the way to mine.
This is just an imaginary old lot.
So these are the
This is the new division. So this driveway would come, access this lot, then pass through, access this lot.
Okay.
So this line right here is not there right now, or it is?
No, not right now.
So he owns
He owns all
Okay, I was thinking it was a different family member that owned it here.
No, that that line is there. I think that line is there, but it's the same family that owns all the property. No.
But this is dated different than this?
Yes, the same family. What is it?
Mark?
I gave it to my son.
Mark?
The front piece of
Trump piece.
And that's a designated right of way that was on there, but I
And it looks like that, I'm assuming that the parcel, parcel A, parcel B, and they each listing in the neighborhood of thirty six to thirty eight thousand square feet of property?
Yes, it's roughly, it's a little over an acre and a half and it's basically
Yes, it looked big.
Split in two.
Okay.
Tish, you got something?
So it's already been divided once?
It was always, it was always two lots. I bought two lots. I originally bought the back section. I had a different route to get get to it. And after the storm, the person whose house I drove by took me to court. So I had to get a right of way through that lot. So I bought that front lot also. So I could get back to
So that's going to stay empty? Is that the plan? That front? Where the driveway passes through, you know?
I would like my son to build on it one day, but you never know. It had a house on it at one time.
Ms. Barbara, you have something you want to say?
But that's an acre and a half by itself.
What's the width across the, what's the width across the front?
Eight feet.
The street, okay.
Okay, Ms. Barbara?
The only two things I had in my notes was the the fire sprinkler system, and you've got that taken care of, and the Fire Chief. And the words may in this recommendation. So now that you've done it, I'm good with it.
Okay.
We actually just got everything spread away Friday. I guess with Ms. Charles, we got all that ironed out and figured out. So it's been a little up in the air just until the last minute, but we got it all squared at this point.
Yeah, those were my only questions.
Anything else, Tish?
So we need to add the wording of the fire protection, fire sprinkler or?
I think, I think it's it's not a bad idea to go ahead and get it on the record to add add that verbiage in there that this is all contingent on fire sprinkler being installed in any structures that are built. Back off on those back two lines.
If I was built on the other one, that will have fire sprinklers.
Depends how far you build from the street. You may not need it.
That
If you build up towards Jeff Davis, you may not need it. Like if your son builds.
Well, on the
On those, on those two, on the two rear lots.
Yes.
Okay. All right, can we get a motion?
So we need a motion. We could do it together?
Yeah.
A hundred foot width variance at five two nine, a hundred foot lot width variance at five two five, conditional on
Three two five.
Three two five.
Three two five, sorry. Conditional on the fire sprinkler
System.
System. Finding the words. Fire sprinkle system as discussed with
On both, both dwellings?
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to be official, you can tell, call it A F. You write this down. N F P A thirteen D.
There you go.
Sprinkler system. Covers all those bases.
Okay. Go ahead and add that in there, Tish.
Yes.
E F, yeah, E F T A thirteen B. Okay, all right. Okay, can we get a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Confort. We get a vote. One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion passed. You got to come before the Mayor Board of Alderman, and Chris will tell you everything. Okay, we'll move on. We have a public hearing for eleven thirteen and eleven seventeen Waverly Avenue, parcel number one six two F dash one dash O four dash zero eight eight dot zero 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 owned by Brian Lawrence and Judy Schaefer. A, Brian Schaefer has filed a preliminary and final plat approval for proposed eleven thirteen, eleven seventeen Waverly Avenue. Brian Schaefer has requested a twelve and a half foot lot with with variance for property located proposed eleven thirteen Waverly Avenue. Is Mr. Schaefer here? The record reflect that Mrs. Schaefer is not here. Should we table this to next meeting, Mr. Chris?
So, yeah, I don't know enough about it to be able to answer any questions when they come up, so.
Yeah, he's
They were here
He's been here before, but
He has. Well, I, and I don't know for if it makes a difference, but maybe what you're saying is right. Maybe it needs to be tabled, but when they were here before, they wanted to split it into three lots, and we convinced them to come back saying they wanted two lots. So that's what they did. And I went past by, yeah, it's the same, you know, it seemed like two lots would be certainly okay. And I don't know, maybe they thought they didn't have to come back if they, because we recommended they come back offering to do it in two And I, I don't know, maybe they thought they didn't have to come back, if they, because we recommended they come back offering to do it in two lots.
I, I haven't heard, Megan, have you heard anything?
Well, he's, I have him canceled the last, what, two months?
Yes, two or three.
I just wanna make sure he understands the protective tree ordinance, that, cause there are protective trees.
Well, but we'll wait till we see what we can do before we get into that part of it.
But you know, I would think you probably, we just have to wait until he comes, huh?
Yeah, yeah, and we'll, we'll be in touch with him tomorrow to let him know.
Okay, we're gonna, can I get a motion to table number nine?
I'll make that motion to table.
Motion, uh, four-two, second by four-three, okay, we have a vote, one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Tabled. Okay, we have a public hearing for four-twenty-seven Sears Avenue, parcel number one-six-two-Q dash one dash one-O dash oh-eight-eight dot zero-zero-zero, owned by Jody and Peggy Thiebaud. Jody and Peggy Thiebaud have filed for preliminary and final plat approval for a proposed four-twenty-seven and four-thirty-one Sears Avenue. B, Jo- Jody and Peggy Thiebaud have requested twenty-five foot lot width variance for a property located at proposed four-thirty-one Sears Avenue. C, Jody and Peggy Thiebaud requesting a seventeen-hundred-and-fifty square foot lot area variance for a property located at proposed four-thirty-one Sears Avenue. Is, uh, okay, you here, okay? We'll let Mr. Chris go ahead and speak, do we have any negatives, uh, on this property here? You know, that, I think, anyone else is here, you here for the Sears Avenue, okay, we'll get with you in a minute, sir. Okay.
All right, uh, yeah, Mr. Thiebaud, he was here a few months back, uh, had requested to split this property into three. Again, you guys kinda indicated that it may be better to look at splitting it just into two parcels instead of three, uh, which he did do that, went back and in doing so created a conforming lot. One of them would be, one of them's can be conforming, no, no variances or anything required. The other one would be non-conforming in that it would not have the requisite square footage or frontage. So he's, he's requesting variances for those two aspects as well, uh, in conjunction with the final and preliminary plats.
Okay.
Hey, you'll do it.
Okay, hey, do it, Mr. Thiebaud.
I see you again.
Okay, tell us what you wanna do and.
So we got, we, we had the surveyor, uh, log everything to split in two lots like you guys had asked, two, one is gonna be one hundred by one-ten, the other one is seventy-five by one-ten. And we're gonna build houses on them. And asking your permission to grant this, so we can get movement on the project.
Okay, we have someone from the audience, we're gonna hear what they gotta say. Come forth, sir, and state your name, address, and we're under two-minute rule, so say what you gotta say.
Hold it, hold on.
I say, yeah.
Uh, Joe Cure, four-ten-four Street, um, uh, sorry, Joe Cure, four-ten-four Street. I was just asking for the, uh, is, is the current ordinance is a hundred row frontage and twelve thousand square foot? Ten thousand, okay, so, I mean, for variance, wha- what is the hardship? You, you have to have a hardship for a variance, so what is the hardship here?
What's it?
Okay.
Pretty simple.
House.
It's not just a hardship, though. I mean, it has to go contrary to the public, what's around the surrounding area, what's around the house and everything. And me going out there and looking at this and talking to the few of the neighbors too, um, you know, right across the street, there's two seventy-foot lots, right to the right of it, across the street, seventy-foot lot, right next to it, on the east side, seventy, I forget the exact measurement. But there's, if a seventy-five foot lot fits in that.
Man, I didn't look at everybody's right next to them, I'm just looking, you know, if.
We got about two minutes.
I mean, one across the street is conforming lot, the one to the west is conforming, the one south of it, two are, two are.
So, so the, the one to the west of it is? The one to the west of it is hundred, hundred and, a hundred and ten, correct?
I forget the exact.
Yeah, and then the one below it is conforming.
The one to the north?
Yes.
Yes, it is, but both to the left and the right of that one, they're not, looks like the one, looks like they've combined two lots. But on his side of the street, um, the one to the east is not, so there's a mix.
Sure, and, and I'm not saying there's not a mix, all I'm saying is, I mean, if, if, if the city just continues to approve the variance, and maybe we should just change the ordinance altogether. I know we, I know this was kinda brought up several different times, uh, of if you're just gonna keep on going with the seventy-five foot without a hundred foot, then just change the ordinance.
The, I'll tell you, the tough thing for me is, I go out, cause I go look at these and I look at them, and I look at the neighborhood, and I got a application or a thing that I use for work, that I can measure everything around it, and, um, it just doesn't seem fair to a person with a cam or anybody else, if every other house in the neighborhood, or the majority of them, are, you know, they built their houses back when it wasn't there. Um, I mean, that's really why they have our board here.
Sure.
Cause if it was just, nope, it's gotta be a hundred, we wouldn't need to be here. You know, so, that, that's where I come from, you know, there's, now, if I went out there and they were all like the one right across the street, there, there'd be no way I'd let them have it. But, you know, looking at the balance, that's what I look at.
That's fair, I mean, that's why I came there, just a voice.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's why we're here.
I, I would love to be hardline on it, cause the rule's a rule, I'm a rule guy, but.
But the whole city.
But the whole city is so, you know, cut up and, you know, from the years, I mean, it's all over the city, you almost, well, like I said, I don't wanna speak for me, I feel it's, I don't know if it's fair or just, whatever, that, you know, he wanted three lots, we said, you know, absolutely not.
Which they said no.
Yeah, we said no to that.
And that was fine, so we went back and.
Yeah.
Which was understandable.
Which, I mean, literally, that, that's the short end of it, is where's the hardship on it? I mean, if we just wanna keep cutting up lots, cutting up lots, just get more houses, I mean, that's fine, if that's the city's view of it, right? But if, the way I understood it, a variance is, what's the hardship of it? Is it due to wetland delineation, is it due to the shop, shape of the lot? None of those are the cases here, the, the, the lot was already platted, um, and either he already had the lot or repurchased the lot, either way, that's the way the lot came.
Was, it was seven-twenty-five foot lots.
Right, through the years, they've been attitude.
Yeah.
So it's platted different.
Split down.
Yeah, so if, if he bought that and built, you know, you know, where it was, they, they would all be that way.
Your objection is noticed, sir.
Okay, appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Actually, it's a good question, I, I agree with you, a good question, um, but I think, you know, you're still gonna have to meet to, you know, your, your distance from the, from your property and stuff like that, so it's not like you can crunch up on someone because you got a little smaller lot, so that, you know, keep that in mind that.
Yeah, we're not giving you another variance.
Okay, uh, Ward, let's see, hold a minute, uh, Ward one, you have any questions?
Yeah, I was just concerned about the, the, the amount of variance he needed, the one thousand seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty feet.
Seventeen hundred and fifty feet is, is the difference from the ten thousand, where it's at now in the seventy-five by one-ten lot.
Yeah, that, that was my biggest concern.
The other one.
So Ward two, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Three?
No, that's all.
Four?
No, but I would make a condition that he, he not asked for any other variances as far as.
Well, I don't know what we're gonna run into, I mean, as far as, we're not gonna ask any more property variances.
As far as encroaching, like, build that house.
Yeah, no.
Right, and that, that's what I was getting at, you still gotta stay, you're gonna have a smaller lot, but a lot of people have smaller lots, and you still stay.
Side step back.
Yeah. Yeah, but, yeah, I got a buddy that's, I mean, three blocks down the road, every lot is fifty by.
But you still, you know, try to keep your house away from your property lines and.
Yeah, so I could see why you went to the ten thousand, cause.
Okay, let's get a motion.
No, yes, ma'am.
We get a motion.
I'll move to approve the preliminary final plat, twenty-five foot lot variance, seventeen fifty square foot variance, with the stipulation that there will be no more variances as far as his house being built too close to any property.
Okay, so that's A B A, yeah, okay, let's see.
I second that, I think that's a good, good way to put it.
Second? Okay, can we get a vote, one moment, sir, can we get a vote, one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion pass. You too, thank you, sir, be careful driving back.
Thank you so much, sir.
All right, thank you, be careful driving, all right, number eleven, public, public here for three-eleven Highway ninety, parcel number one-three-eight-J dash two dash three-four dash oh-one-one dot zero-zero-zero owned by Joe Cure. Joe Cure is requesting additional use to allow a processing facility incidental to retail establishment. Is Mr. Joe Cure here? You here for that, okay? All righty, um, is anyone else here in the audience for the property with Joe Cure? What we know as the old show. Okay, the director's like, then, do we have anything that came in, any negativity? No, okay, Mr. Chris?
All right, this is, uh, property is zone C three, so this use for a processing facility is allowed by, it's a conditional use. It's got to be in conjunction with a, like a storefront business, which my understanding from Joe is that they plan to, the processing and sales are at the same location, so that has, it meets that criteria, so I just, again, it's, uh, it's a conditional use. That's what he's, what he's looking for, to be able to do this over there.
Okay, Mr. Joe, uh, you've got anything else, Mr. Chris, I'm sorry.
Nope, nope.
Mr. Joe, can you come up?
You have one, too, next time.
Okay, state your name, address, and what you, uh, request.
Um, Joe Cure, four-ten-four Street, asking for conditional use of the, um, who would be the building, three-eleven?
Okay, a couple of questions I gotta share.
Okay.
What are you gonna do as far as smell goes, and what are you gonna do as far as the shells? Can you explain the operation you're all gonna do, and what you're all gonna do with the empty shells, if there's any? And what are you required by with the border health and things of that nature?
Okay, so as far as shells, um, cause primarily this will be used as, uh, seafood, oyster processing. But for the oyster shells, there's not a rough room, I don't know how many people's actually been to a shotgun house before, but normally a shotgun house keeps the shells on site, just due to, um, just easy for them. However, for us, we don't have that kinda real estate at the, at that facility, at that land, uh, nor would it be, you know, very pleasing for everybody else if they were. So naturally, all the, uh, processing will be done on the inside, uh, all shells will be, um, put on conveyor and then loaded up into a truck and dumped daily, because every truck that comes in pretty much has to come out, so eighteen well, the other oysters comes in, one's gonna have to leave. So it's not like I can just keep shells there and to, to keep the smell down or anything, they're gonna be moving. They really don't start smelling until they're sitting in the sun for several days, and then they start rotting, right? So that's not a concern in mind. As far as the border health, um, I mean, you, you, we have all those requirements currently at our facility that we have, so we're very aware of what we have to do, keep it, uh, clean environment and washed down and stuff like that.
And keep it disinfected and everything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, as far as your landscaping, what you plan on doing in front to make the ambience look better and all?
Of the landscaping?
Yeah, like front of, front of the place.
I, I don't know yet, so my, my main thing now is first to see, before I put in a whole bunch of working time and effort and money, is to see if it's gonna be allowed by y'all. Uh, when we acquired the building, I really didn't have, uh, plans of exactly what was gonna go there. The building is in excellent shape, truly is, uh, built back when stuff was actually built nice, it's got big twelve-inch.
We're familiar with this show, I'm familiar with this show.
Yeah, so, um, I don't really have any plans, uh, whenever it comes down to, like, if I got approval from, uh, the planning zoning and then the council, I, I would then come up with some renderings to, to see what we would actually.
Well, the, the city has an ordinance, and I will let Mr. Chris go ahead and speak.
He may have caught you a little bit off guard, Joe, that, that, uh, the landscaping requirement would be one thing that, um, my recommendation to them is if they do approve your conditional use, that is stipulated with the requirement that you do landscape that front parking lot area, just for some aesthetics.
Oh, now, when you talk about, uh, like, the actual parking lot itself?
Yeah.
Yes, and the, the parking lot can't stay like it is. Um, I, I wouldn't keep it like that, so more likely what we would do is, uh, have, uh, concrete, uh, for the handicap, uh, parking area, so we probably have, uh, concrete parking areas, and then where the trucks would be, uh, backing up to the side of the building, that'd be all concrete, up to a concrete dock, and then the rest of the parking lot would probably just be some fifty-seven.
When we get to, when we get to the point that he has gotten these approvals and he's ready to proceed, then we, we would then require a site plan from him that would come to you guys, uh, for approval. Hopefully, this approval, however, may shake out, but it, he would, he would have to come back to you guys with a site plan before he could.
So that's where we take care of that.
Before he could do that, yeah, he's, I guess that would, that would cover that, but if you wanted to stipulate at this point that you will grant, recommend approval, provided he's committed to doing some landscaping in the parking lot, that's fine. If you don't wanna do that, that's fine as well, we, we'll get to that point at some, sometime.
Okay.
Right, cause this property is actually on the, you know, sore eye site.
Yeah, the, the, uh, study that was done a few years ago did actually, they took a picture of that particular piece of property and put it in.
It was rough.
In the report, so, we're trying to, we're working to get down Highway ninety, working with the property owners on ninety, trying to, we're taking it one step at a time, trying to clean things up, get some landscaping, kinda beautify it a little bit.
Okay, we're gonna let, uh, Ward one, would you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Ward two?
Nothing.
Ward three?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, although I am excited, you know, I mean, it's great that people are looking to invest and, and do stuff, I think we need that, um, but just, and it sounds like y'all have experience with this, so probably shouldn't be any problems, but, um, the one thing I, I was thinking about, what about your, your, your wash-down water, I mean, what, is somehow y'all must handle that already, that it doesn't stink up the area? If you got a wash-down, you're washing, where does it go, I mean?
So, so most of your wash-down, like, right now, currently, most of our wash-down water is allowed to go back to, um, any kind of, uh, basically a field drain, but now that we're in the city, I mean, it would just, we could wash straight, uh, straight.
Into your drainage? You would have, okay, yeah, I, I figured y'all would have.
So, I mean, right now, we're allowed sewer where we are, so we're allowed to, uh, have different layers of filtration before it goes overboard or into a field bed.
Okay, sounds good, and the only other thing I wanted to mention, and I know it's just something that I bring up once in a while, because it's the first thing I notice when I go there, obviously, no one's here to complain about it, which is, which is great, I think a lot of people are looking for someone to invest in the area, obviously, but it does bother me, there, I didn't see any sign that something's happening there, and.
You're talking about a zoning sign.
Huh?
Talking about a public.
No, 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 a sign about, about.
City sign.
This sign, there's no sign telling the neighbors that, you know, if they have something to say, then, then maybe they could come. But I know you, obviously, you know, if, if we say, yeah, it's okay, you still gotta go to the mayor and all meeting. I would think we oughta at least have a sign out before it goes to the mayor's meeting, that way if someone has something to say, they can come say it, at least.
That's why we put it in the paper, we don't have to post.
Well, I thought we did.
No.
Why we don't have to put signs?
The legal requirement for posting is to put it in the newspaper, so that's, that's based on our ordinance.
Shouldn't we be consistent, though, we put signs?
We don't put signs out, the only time I have to post a sign is for a rezoning. They used to post signs.
Yeah, they used to, yeah.
But it is not a requirement, absolutely not a requirement to post signs, except for a rezoning.
Then I, okay, well, I think we need to make.
That, if, if that is, if that is a, uh, if that is a, a concern you have, possibly something we need to discuss.
Yeah.
Outside of this, as far as changing the ordinance, but for right now, it really don't have any bearing on what Mr. Cure's up here to talk about.
I'm just saying, it causes, I know in, in a few other cases, it causes some bad feelings, cause people feel they're not. I'm just saying, it causes, I know in, in a few other cases, it causes some bad feelings, cause people feel they're not, their neighborhood's not being aware of something. Because in almost every other case we go to, there's a sign saying that, hey, someone's looking for an ordinance, that, that's all I'm saying, I mean, it's better to be, to be clear with everybody what's going on.
Okay, it is noted, and, um, it'll be brought up, okay, Mr. Chris will bring that up, okay, Ward four?
No, I just think we should add the, um, that he's compliant with the landscaping of the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Which, I mean, we, we'll have to do that anyways.
Right.
Yeah.
Just a, a wire requirement.
Right.
It's talking about dressing it up, you know, see man out there, maybe some palm trees or flowers, whatever the city says, you know?
We're not looking for a golf course.
No.
Not looking to put one in.
Okay, um, can we get a motion?
Um, motion for conditional use to allow processing facility incidental to a rental establishment. Um, noting compliance with zoning ordinance on landscaping.
I'll second that.
Okay, get a vote, one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion approved. Okay, thank you, Mr. Joe. We have, uh, number twelve, motion to approve final plat for Chakto Plaza Highway ninety, owned by George Brumfield. There is a parcel carved out that has already been approved for a preliminary plat, we're just approving the final plat, I will let Chris speak.
Yeah, this is as procedural as it gets, the preliminary plat's already come through, matter of fact, they probably noticed that they've already started construction over there, uh, with some demo of the parking lot. All this is, is the approval of a final plat, which there are no changes from the preliminary plat, this just gets it to where they can get this recorded over to county, so all this is about.
Okay, any, Ward one?
I have questions.
Ward two?
Nope.
Ward three?
Nope.
Ward four?
No question.
Anybody in the audience that's for or against this final plat approval, make a note, nobody's in the audience, okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, I'd like to, uh, make the motion to approve the final plat for Chakto Plaza Highway ninety, owned by George Brumfield.
Okay, we get a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ward three, can we get a vote, one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion approved, now can I get a motion to a joint?
I'll move, I'll make that motion.
Move by Ward two?
I'll second.
Second by Ward one, vote one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Happy New Year, everybody, motion? Stay going, that was a quick one, look at that.